It is actually six twenty eight.
Let's go.
And a half.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trusty Trombley.
Yeah.
Trusty McFedrich.
Here.
Trusty Trombley.
Here.
Trusty Garrick.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here. Need a motion to approve the...
Budget meeting.
Budget meeting of February twenty fifth.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion here?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the village board meetings of February eleventh?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Is there any changes here?
I didn't see any.
Nope.
Any discussion? This is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention. Alright. Petition, or presentation of petitions, communications, general question period, members of the community. Welcome, Nicole.
Thank you. Well, we have some library events coming up this Thursday, March fourteenth, from six to seven thirty. We're celebrating Pie Day. That's the math, three point one four, and we'll be doing some math activities while eating pie. Saturday is the children's story hour, which is every third Saturday throughout the school year at ten fifteen. And then Saturday, March thirtieth, at three, we're doing a women's history fee.
Sounds like fun.
Tickets are on sale for that.
Yes.
For ten dollars.
At the library.
It's reserved for only thirty people to participate in it, and so there's gonna be people playing the role of famous women in history and just a bunch of activities around it, and really kinda fun.
What day is that?
Saturday, thirtieth.
What time is that?
Three to four thirty. The flyers came out, too.
So it's a donation to the library.
That's great.
So reserve your spot. Nikki's selling tickets. I have two. I can sell them in my car right now. It's cool for my husband. Get a ton of over, so buy from me, not her.
I swore you said Nikki, I'm looking at her. Put the pressure on you, Nick.
Yeah.
You're up.
You're funny.
Oh, I don't have a written report tonight. I was away all last week getting educated for another year.
You got that out of the way.
Oh, after twenty years, I'm brilliant. There's a few new code changes that I spoke to the mayor with about today. Especially accessibility in older buildings and stuff like that, so next month I'll have something for you on that. Other than that, the past month, the only thing that I really have going on is working with the designer for the project at the church, trying to get that ready for a planning board. And getting all the members together to have a meeting, so we can get that approved and they can move along with that. Other than that, it's been fairly quiet. Couple of compliance letters I think I sent out last month. So, other than that, that's about it.
Yeah, so you had one here for eleven thirty seven, and you said within the week, and it was dated February twenty seventh. Have you had any follow-up on that for the garbage with the rodents?
No, like I said, I was gone all last week, so I haven't got a chance yet.
Anything else for Mike? Alright. Excuse me. Good evening and welcome to your March Village Board meeting. It's a very important meeting as we will approve a tentative budget for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty for the village to operate on for the next fiscal year. This is a budget with minimal spending over the next twelve months with a small tax increase, eight cents per thousand to stay within the two percent tax gap, and using some funds from the fund balance to make the numbers address the increases due to inflation and necessary extra purchases that go along with running this as a business. No one likes to see a tax increase, and we have been able to maintain a stable rate of three dollars and eighty-eight cents per thousand for a number of years. Considering all of the services that this village offers, water and wastewater services, sidewalk plowing, lighting district, various recreational activities, and other village organized events, this small increase will help make sure these services continue for our residents and for our visitors. We, as a board, have worked very hard to keep spending in check, and this is a budget that addresses our anticipated needs for the next year. Other news of interest includes the long-awaited wastewater blower replacement project that is scheduled to begin before the end of the month. Next week?
This Thursday it'll be here. Wednesday I got material coming in, and Thursday the blowers will be here.
Alright. Movement forward, movement. Thank you. As you were aware, we've been able to keep one functioning blower working on a wing and a prayer, but it sorely, sorely needs replacing, and I'm glad to hear Mr. Darlecker say that it will happen soon. We are actively looking for available options in replacing troublesome water mains that have been the source of many of the breaks and boil water orders we have recently had to deal with. Not to mention all the overtime, wear and tear on the equipment, and having to put up with the elements, as is today. And I know that Mike's going to attempt to dig a broken water line tomorrow morning. And then another one maybe the day after that. So... Potential funding sources are difficult to secure. Time for funding is difficult to plan on, and roadblocks are frequent and confusing. Often the first hurdle to jump through is whose advice do we take in keep things moving forward? Agree with that?
Completely.
The contamination cleanup project managed by D E C is on hold until spring arrives, and then the outside issues will be addressed and hopefully mitigated. It takes extra time when you have to deal with the requirements of state agencies to get things done. The streetlight aggregation project is still in the works, moving forward slowly. This is an exciting program, promising much improved street lighting with a very short payback period for the village. This changeover to LED lamps will provide a better lighting system with fewer problems at a lesser expense. I would like to strongly encourage all registered voters, village voters, to cast their ballot on March nineteenth with the polls open from noon until nine P M. here at the village office. I guess I'll do this now instead of at the end. Bear with me. As I have chosen not to seek reelection for another term as your mayor, I have great confidence that this board will remain a strong advocate for its residents and continue to move forward with the future of this village as its focus. Over the past fifteen years or so, we have faced many difficult situations. For example, infrastructure concerns, equipment issues, residential concerns, and of course, an attempt to dissolve the village when the largest turnout of voters went on to defeat this proposal in an overwhelming margin. It was, for the most part, or it has, for the most part, been a pleasure to speak with village residents, hearing their concerns, and helping out whenever possible to make life easier for them. That is, and will continue to be, a board of action as well as reaction to the needs of the village residents. I have certainly enjoyed working with this board. The wonderful office staff, Juanita and Mary do an excellent job, and without them, I would have had a difficult time managing the day-to-day events. Mike Jolker and his very capable DPW crew, who do an excellent job maintaining village streets, water, wastewater services, and all the other essential priorities of the village, and Mike Pedro and his efforts to keep the village codes enforced and maintaining a safe environment for our residents. To the village board, I hope you will continue to work together and continue to make this village a great place to live and raise a family. To each of you folks out there in village land, this is not goodbye as the old cowboy rides off towards the sunset, but so long for the time being. As the often quoted philosopher likes to say, "It is what it is." There is time, or there is a time, to seek new adventures. Thank you for all, thank you all for your time, your patience, and your understanding. It has been a privilege.
Thank you for being our mayor.
Please, thank you. Hey, you started that, you're first.
Great, I got nothing after that. Still working on grants. I've got some that are due at the end of this month that will be written, probably on the thirtieth of the month, as usual. My New Year's resolution did not come through, but I'm great under pressure. So, we'll keep you appraised that. We're focusing the one grant on the music in the park and the other one in combination with the grant from the Health Department, God willing, that we do get. And so if we don't get it, then we can go for that, but then the funds can be used for preparing the land for the kayak launch, because I think that one really is a major, major focus for us to to focus on. So unless anyone has any other grants for me to be applying for?
I haven't seen nothing come across the wires recently.
Yeah, there's just two that have come through, so we'll see.
Alright.
I'm hopeful.
Thank you. Tom?
Well, working with Mike here, trying to get equipment ready for road testing our new employee, and actually been working with him with that, and we're making progress. We're gonna try to schedule. As for the project between the town and the village in regards to the water, we're still waiting to hear back. I haven't heard of that.
Nothing?
No, I haven't even replied to my email, so I'm a little discouraged with that.
Gotta have the patience of Jesus here.
Yeah, I know. So I'm not sure where we're at. Have anything new to report other than what we talked about the last meeting?
Well, I would certainly like to thank you for your efforts to help our employee get around and, you know, get his license and make sure that everything is okay in a vehicle.
Thank you.
I really appreciate your efforts there. Thank him very much for doing that.
You're welcome. We're shooting the schedule of the road test the last week of March, so. I asked him to schedule it, so.
Hopefully everything will fall together, you know. Can we address that extension here in a few minutes? Karen?
There are a couple of events in March that I'll mention. The Champlain Book Club meets on March twenty eighth at seven at the Meeting House. And there is line dancing on March thirty first.
Where?
The Meeting House from three to four, and you'd better be there. Yeah, I told everyone you were coming.
Give my boots shined up.
Yeah, yeah. Hope you're there.
Make sure there's no treads on them, or you won't be able to slide.
That's true.
I'll just, I don't need to give you all the details, but April is really, really busy. Just very quickly, we have, oh, we have International Slow Art Day. Champlain being one of about a hundred and forty venues around the world. We've got art day celebration scheduled. Tracy and Jeff and Ron are coming again to put on a music event. And there's something else that I can't remember right now, but April is gonna be packed. So just clear your calendars right now. There's gonna be plenty to do right here in Champlain. And I also am looking for volunteers to be part of the tree committee. I want to get some input from some people that know about trees and what kinds we'd like to plant and where we should plant them, and maybe even identify some trees that we have with some of those little tags that you can put on the trees. So we have a little tree walk. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Kimberly?
Okay.
Sorry to me be so formal there.
Actually, that's not my real name. I was, I went back looking at the grant for the kayak, the mini grant, and in looking at it again this morning, it said money is needed to be spent by the end of March. I emailed Sierra today going, how are we supposed to spend money that grant hasn't been awarded? What are you supposed to do in the winter, in this winter weather? And I haven't heard back from her. So, still waiting on that. I know she said originally, when I talked with her, it wasn't going to be awarded till sometime in March, so. Yeah, I'm a bit confused on that, but there is also another one that she sent me that she said she would give me some input on from A A R P. Have you seen that one?
I have.
I have.
Okay, and I have been looking at those.
Me too.
And there are several different categories.
Yeah.
Yeah, and one of them, she, in the email to myself, and I don't, I can't remember if you guys were talking about it or not, she thought it would fit in well with the kayak launch, to complement it.
And there's also one that is for aging communities.
Yes.
That's the A A R P component, and I think that we really have a good chance with that. So I have a lot of connections around that route, so that should be helpful as well with the writing. But it would be nice to have an answer, you know, from them, I know.
I'm just, I'm kinda confused on the, you know, on the
Timeline.
Timeline, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't really make sense.
No, it doesn't, so. But I didn't hear back from her today, so. We'll see. And I had one other thing, and now I can't think of it. Oh, yeah, to go along with what Tom said about the town, I don't know when we're gonna get anything from them. I think the email was they were going to do some kind of a
Proposal.
Proposal. And my, my email to Rick and Jason was, are you gonna bring it before this committee to, to review? Or are you gonna send it to the village board? I didn't answer. So.
Well...
We're gonna leave it at that.
Discretion's a better part of valor here.
Yep. So that's pretty much where that stands.
Keep my mouth shut. As hard as it is, because next I'm gonna sit over there, and I'm not gonna keep my mouth shut.
Don't have to.
I'll get a minute.
I've never kept my mouth shut. I don't want me to have to keep it shut on that side. Is that something I missed in the lessons?
No, no.
When we doing the book tour?
Alright, let's do the report from the county treasurer, please.
Everyone has their expense revenue reports for February two thousand nineteen. I have a couple of transfers to accounts in need. One is to a fifty-one forty-two point one snow removal personal services, four thousand from a nineteen ten point four unallocated insurance. And the other is F two F eighty-three forty point one transmission distribution personal services, fifteen thousand from F eighty-three eighty-nine point four other water expense, fifteen thousand. These transfers, we have six more payrolls, so this should carry us through to the end of the year. I'm hoping.
Okay.
Tell Mother Nature that.
Yeah.
I know.
There's six more payrolls, that's interesting.
For this year.
Yeah. Yeah. Any questions? Need a motion to approve the transfer, please?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion here? Another roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty McFedrich.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Garrick.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Let's do the warrant.
Warrant. We have additional invoices of seven hundred and fifty dollars and eighty cents for a total warrant of twenty-one thousand six fifty-nine nineteen.
Make a motion to approve the warrant with the additional invoices.
Have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion here?
I have one question.
Yes.
Wex Bank, is that for Champlain Peterbilt?
That's, no, that's fuel. That's gasoline and diesel.
Right, but isn't that where you, where you used to get it?
Used to get it there, yeah.
Okay, so what is Wex?
Wex is a, it's a credit card company we use to buy fuel.
Okay, I understand.
And we get state contract pricing. Just go.
Oh, yeah.
And, and Peterbilt was not able to take sales tax off anymore.
Right, okay.
This automatically does it for us.
Right. I assume that's what else I just wanted to confirm, because it was a new name, Wex.
Yeah, that's diesel and gasoline, yeah.
Okay. That's all my questions.
That's a good deal.
Quick.
Anyone else, any other comments? If there's no further comments, we have a first and a second. Have a roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty McFedrich.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Garrick.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Anything else want to add?
No.
Hey, Mike?
Well, this past month, we spent most of our time with ice and snow removal, trying to keep drains open. We did some servicing of equipment and repairs and still continuing to do so. Our salt and sand is extremely low. Hoping, we've already mixed three times. We've already got our allotted amount of salt for the year. We still got some left. Last week, Mother Nature was pretty good to us, but I don't know what's gonna happen. It's gonna be close, but I do have a backup plan, so if we do get that low, I do have something in place where we'll, we'll make it through, so.
Is it legal?
Yeah. Yeah.
Have a plan.
We got a plan, and it's legal. We know we have a water main break, we know we have a water leak down here on Main Street, because we've been here quite often, scraped the ice out of the state road. I did have Lake Placid, I got ahold of them, and they did come back again and correlate for me. The findings I really didn't like, but I had no choice. Looks like we have three water main breaks between the phone company and the first house down below the hills, so.
Do they come, they come as part of like a shared service, or do we pay them?
No, we don't pay them.
That's pretty awesome.
I even tried to, I even tried to get them lunch, the two guys that came, and you know, that's part of, there's only like, I think those guys in Sarnac, like, there's only a couple people have those correlators.
We all like Placid a lot. Thank you.
That's twice they've been down to help us.
I realized that, I was wondering.
They've done a real-time correlator, so it
I would prefer, I don't know how Mike feels about this, but I would prefer that we let Mike call the superintendent and thank him rather than send a letter, because I'm not sure how well a letter would be received by him either.
I did, I did talk to him, and there's no issue.
That's fine.
There's no issue if we do send one.
Alright.
Because I wanted to make sure that
We can do that.
They do go out to other places and try to help for this reason.
Yeah, this is, this is great service.
We are gonna try to dig one of them tomorrow, the one up, right on, it's right on the curve, just past the phone company. They're gonna mark it out in the morning for me, the fiber, because the fiber is, I think, right where our water line is, and this one here is a leaper. It's not completely broke, so I'm gonna be digging through frost. I don't know what's gonna happen, but it's gonna take us some time, because I don't wanna break the fiber.
Yeah.
It's gonna, it's gonna be
It's gonna be difficult.
Yeah.
Frozen ground near fiber.
So, we're gonna get that one done first, and then where that one is, they heard two, they think there's another one about five or six feet from that, so if there is, we'll, once we get down there, we'll travel up the line a little bit, and we'll see, and we'll get two right there fixed if that is the case. And then we may not be able to do the other one until late in the week. We're gonna need, we're gonna have to help unload stuff here Wednesday for the blower project, and Thursday, and cases supposed to be coming to do our service and our loading, they were supposed to come last week, they're coming this week, but I'm gonna have to tell them that they may have to wait. I wanna try to get some of that water out of the ground before we dig the one down below, because the next one down is in the first driveway, where we had, we had two or three. And with that much saturation of ground, I'm worried about losing state road again and not being, no asphalt. So I'm gonna have to line up ahead of time. I'll probably see if I can get a whole ton of Plasberg board in their hot box, get a couple tons of coal patch, stick it in the garage overnight, and then in the morning fire it up before we start digging, and talking with the state, I think they may do the same, you know, even if I have them just charge you at, the stuff to us, but they can put it in their hot box, put it in the garage, because after we're gonna have to put something back in the road. With that much saturation of ground, it's hard to get compaction. I mean, you've got tractor trailers going through there. So that's gonna be a little trickier. The second time around, gotta take the sidewalk out, gotta take the ladies driveway out, or the end of the driveway, so. But we'll, we'll look at that. Let's get the first one done, and then we'll move forward, and if it's, can't be the end of the week, it'll be sometime beginning of next week. Been, we've been sneaking by here for, you know, we did the one up here, and then the water stopped for two, three days, and all of a sudden started again. We knew we had another one just of nowhere. And it's hard on the state road, you don't just wanna start digging, you know, so I'm thankful that the guys from Lake Placid did come down and helped us out, so. As soon as we get caught up to the frost freeze cycles that kill us here, I gotta start unpatching. We've got potholes that need to be done. I gotta get them dried out and, and get them started. So that'll be, as soon as we can get caught up, that'll be our next, our next adventure here, trying to get, trying to get the patching done.
They're nothing compared to Plasberg, though. We really are in mint condition in comparison.
You wanna stay in the left lane, not the right lane, and you go through?
Oh, absolutely.
But you have an option. Down there, there's no option.
Now you go through your street.
It's brutal, yeah.
Go through your street, cut over, that's what I do.
I'm glad you're not on your radar, because they are
And that's great, that's great to mention, too, the blower projects moving forward. Like I say, he called me today. He expected the blowers Wednesday, and then he called me right back. I think it wouldn't be till Thursday. So that is moving forward, and we're moving some stuff around down there to give those guys some room, but other than that, that's really all we've got right now. If anybody got any questions?
Anything for me?
Any progress with lady on the truck?
Not really, no. We worked on it all afternoon. They worked on it while I scraped ice and getting ready over here and whatnot. I told them to call, because the last time they went through the same, they thought it was in a column, but they went through that last time, and it was a plug. So they called, but they don't remember what they did to fix it, so they're gonna have to start from the back to the front and check every plug, every so, be working on that again.
What is this for?
Peterbilt, having lighting issues. Put the signal on one side, they may, four ways may come on, you may
Still got brake light one.
They didn't document what they did before? Okay, but we'll get documentation this time.
No, we're, we're working on it here. Because last time it
Do you think, do you think it's tied to those OLEDs at all?
No, you, I have them unplugged. They're unplugged completely and still doing it.
Okay.
So it's, it's not.
So you didn't
Last time they had the steering column and everything apart, they worked five, six hours. They said the steering, the signal light level was bad, and I said, I just washed the truck. Probably water in the plug, and one of them found, they cleaned the plug, and the lights all worked, so they didn't have to, ended up putting it all back together, and so I'm assuming it's a plug. Salt got in there, water got in there, but it's finding the right, there's so many starting to
It does, every light gets screwed up.
Sure do. Yeah.
It's almost like it's in the harness.
You touch the brakes, and it makes the running lights come on, every time you touch the brakes.
And the headlights, yeah.
With the key out, key out of the ignition, just the power, the power on with the key out, and that's, so I think it's either bad ground or transfer of power between the
One day they'll work, the next they don't.
Also, I'd like to say a special thank you to Greg for the time he's spent here as mayor. I know it's time for him to be able to move on and enjoy himself. I will sure miss all that you have done for me and the village to help it run smoothly. I don't think some of the village residents realize the time you spend here trying to make this village better, but I can attest you had some long, hard battles, and you didn't give up. I'm sure you'll not miss the calls from me, the many calls in the middle of the night, letting you know we have another water break. He wanted to be there anytime, day or night, to direct traffic, go get us coffee, or try to help out in any way he could. Sometimes in the middle of the night, I would not call him. The next day, you walk into the office, find out we had a water break. I get that look, and I knew the next words coming out of his mouth, why didn't you call me? I don't know, I don't know of any other municipality where you'd see the mayor out flagging traffic all night. Just goes to show what kind of person he is. He's genuine, in my terms, old school. My past six years here as superintendent, I have learned a lot, and wanna thank you personally for all you have done for me and the community. You will be missed, but as your famous local philosopher said, it is what it is. Thank you for your service and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Nice.
Thank you.
It is what it is.
Okay, correspondence, please.
Correspondence from Clinton County Treasurer regarding to relevia taxes on Patterson's property for Um, correspondence from Clinton County Treasurer regarding to relevia taxes on Patterson's property for Total Estate Corp. Correspondence from Luke Karen, Karen Fine Woods, asking for wastewater credit. Correspondence from New York State D E C regarding Assistant Wastewater Plant Operator. Notice violation to Sandra Barber at one, 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 three, seven, round nine. J C O monthly report, water plant inspection report. Um, charter franchise fees from ten, one, eighteen to twelve, thirty, one, eighteen. Correspondence from Charter Communications regarding Hometown Cable Programming.
Okay, could we go back to correspondence number two, we got, is there any figures that we have for this?
We don't, because we don't have our reading for the, for the bill yet, so that'll be next month.
Alright, so we'll table that till April? Okay.
Were you able to pull anything electronically though?
I didn't, I didn't, uh, it's off, actually, it was still off. He had a line froze in the wall.
Right, in the bathroom.
And split in copper, yeah, I've got a picture of it, and he had, just happened to have the tin off on the outside, and that's, I'm sure that's why it froze in the wall, and it split the plate and blew out through the insulation, it was all running outside on the ground. He had like.
God knows for how long.
Hundred and how many, hundred and thirty, hundred and?
It's, it's gonna be like a hundred and two, a hundred and three thousand pounds.
Wow.
That'll be requested credit for.
For the sewer, for the sewer side of it. We've been close.
Okay. Um, correspondence number three, just to fill the board in and keep them up to date. We, uh, we've been out of compliance for a long time. We need a assistant certified wastewater operator, I guess we all know that. Uh, right now, right now I have, uh, Robert has taken or has begun the home study. Part of this, eventually, you know, as he works his way through here and does the test, and it gets to the final part, which is the activated sludge. He's gonna have to go to school for probably three or four days. But the concern is, and the concern from D E C is, I wrote him a letter saying that we were working towards, or having an employee work towards certification. And I got a return letter from Mr. Streeter, who is the person in charge of this, uh, of this segment. And his concern was, what happens, what happens if the person that we have does, does not pass this test, it's, it's quite a difficult test, plus you have to have a number of hours hands-on documented at the plant. Now, if you look at the, the regulations for certification, it says six months. Now, six months by my term is about a thousand hours. I think we can get away with less than that, as long as it is well documented. Uh, he's already got some time down there, but it wasn't documented. But fifty percent of it is hands-on equipment, stuff like that, and the other fifty percent is the record-keeping and budgeting and all the other paperwork that, that's involved here. So, uh, right now I don't have a backup, I don't have someone else, I think it would be beneficial for the village to have two one A certified assistant plant operators. But, uh, it is time-consuming, and I'm going to recommend to Mike that Robert get to spend some time, an hour a day, somewhere is wherever he can, he can, he can get, two or three hours if possible, to send, uh, to send Robert down into plant to document his hours, but also to spend maybe an hour every once in a while in here on a computer, doing the bookwork. So that it is, uh, you know, we all know how things are when we go home, we don't have a tendency to sit down and do that bookwork stuff, you know, it's, it's essential. Uh, we're in March, I told the, I told the administrator at D E C that our aim was to have someone certified by the end of the year. Is that ambitious? Well, perhaps, but I think it, I think they'll work with us if we don't make it by the end of the year. As long as we show a good faith effort that we are working towards this, and as the village, we're, you know, kinda behind this and, and moving, I think we'll be alright. I think he'll give us some more leeway. As long as he understands, and I told him that I would keep him informed, uh, the progress that was being made and he seems like he's, uh, he's a pretty reasonable, at least I haven't met him, but through his emails and stuff, he's a pretty reasonable person to give us. So, that's where that's at, at the, at the moment. We are attempting to do this, yes.
Greg. Would it be possible, I know hours haven't been documented that he has spent down there, but would it be possible to go back through time sheets?
I think some of that could be done, yes.
And, and, uh, to whenever he started, because that could amount to significant amount of hours.
Well, he's got a couple hundred hours anyway, I think, does he make summers in there or any?
Yeah, thing is, there's nothing documented on paper down there, logs.
Yeah.
I mean, anybody can say they worked.
Right.
You gotta have some kind of.
But if we could go back and prove, if it's two, three hundred hours, it's two, three hundred hours towards the thousand hours that he needs.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Because that's on the, the time sheets, correct?
Well, just, yeah, I mean, I fill the time sheets of what hours they worked where, but.
Right.
There's no, other than that, there's no documentation to show what he did. Did we just put in hours? I mean.
So it should be a log down there whenever he, he, he.
I don't know what they're actually looking for, for documentation.
Well, it's, it's hands-on time writing the machines, the valve filter press, making sure the, you know, the clarifier and all this other stuff that's, that's involved in the mechanics of the plant. The other part is, is, uh, paperwork.
He's had a lot of hours, and he changed all those seals in the bottom there.
All, you know, the chains.
Yeah.
Uh, every time we pull pumps, I mean, all the, the, the diffusers.
But those seals are a big project.
That took, you know, we were there a week or whatever, all those diffusers in the other tank, there's a lot of stuff, but I don't know, as far as what they consider documentation.
Well, I think it's just writing down the time that he's there.
Yeah, because your, your time sheet is an official document.
Dates and times.
Yeah, it is.
So, it's signed, you signed off as a supervisor, so, you know.
But I would say in the future, going forward, that, you know, if he keeps a separate log down here.
Well, what, I've been having to do it, but they never used to. Every day write exactly what you did in your time sheet, because that's the only way, if you just have, if, if you put hours down, but you don't write anything.
Right.
I don't know what they did a year ago from, you know what I mean, it's, it's hard if you don't try to get them to every day, when you get it done, don't wait till two weeks, and then you gotta go through and try to figure out what you did and try to, just every day, just when you punch hour or lunchtime, just write what you did for the day at least, and it makes it easier for me. Because in the two weeks, I gotta figure out what everybody did, when they didn't write it.
So I would suggest, yeah, to do an audit in the morning, just randomly pull those and see if they were signing, we didn't issue a few years, well.
They've been better, they've been better. They've been, they've been good, they've, they've been good now, but.
Okay.
Way back, they didn't used to, Woody always did, but his is always the same, pretty much anyway, but, um, they've been better at, you know, putting down what they did.
Yeah.
I always, when I do every, when it's time for payroll, I bring a sheet up. Before Friday mor- or Monday morning, make sure you put down what you did, if you don't, so now they're looking at each others to see what they did, because sometimes they forget to put, you know, most time they're working together, so.
I agree with you, daily is the best way, I think, just get in the habit.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it needs to be retrained, man.
They have been, they have been lately, but it used to be, it wasn't that way.
Yeah.
Um, so it's hard, it's hard to go back and figure out, you know, a lot of times those, I use my phone, I go through my pictures, the date, timestamp, to remember, you know, like our breaks or what we did, and I use that a lot of times to.
Kind of correlate it.
Yeah. If you're worth a thousand words, right? Well, maybe not a thousand, but.
Thousand hours.
But yeah, you've got, I mean, we've probably, just probably got forty hours just when we did the, the dive ramps, you know?
Yeah.
Pulling pumps, I mean, you were constantly pulling pumps, putting chains in the clarifiers, you know, it takes two, three days. And it's all hours that, but I don't know exactly what they're looking for.
Yeah, is there a way we can find out exactly what their criteria is?
I don't know exactly what they're.
Just to diagnose what they've done, I don't think there is any, as long as, as long as you can show that they're involved in the plant management and, you know, the way the plant works.
A lot of that's subject.
I don't think we gotta be so definitive.
A lot of that is subject to interpretation too, by the guy reviewing it, so, as long as you have something.
Yeah, they're gonna review it, they're gonna look at it, so it's.
And they're, they're, like, pretty sure they're pretty strict about.
Yeah.
You know, the, the weekend hours you can't use, really.
No, mm-hmm.
No, but it would be a start to at least get, you know.
Have a form down there that they can sign in.
The hours documented that you spend down there and help towards this.
Yeah.
And then going forward.
Well, at least now they write it, what they did, you know, for the day or for the.
Okay. Alright, um, I would ask that, uh, if we could just move on here, I would ask that you review correspondence number eight, which deals with Charter Communications regarding Hometown Cable Programming. Uh, we all pass, all the municipalities here pass a resolution in support of Hometown Cable. And if you look at this, it's, it's like, uh, we have to prove.
I know, I read it.
So, I'm gonna.
And they made it overwhelming so that we would walk away and just drop it.
And this, oh, this.
Classic.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, uh, to me, this is a, this is a situation that has to be handled, not by the municipalities, but by Calvin and Hometown Spectrum.
Can Calvin answer these questions for us to give back to them?
Well, the part that I think bothers me the most in here is I don't want the village to be held accountable for these conversations.
No way, absolutely.
These conversations have to take place between Spectrum and Hometown Cable. We can support Calvin and his efforts, but we should not, we should not be extending.
Right, and expenses would come on to the village.
Exactly.
Yeah, and on and on, but, you know, they're gonna say these things too to make you go away, can they really legally do all this?
Oh, yeah, sure. Yep.
Um, i- i- it's classic, so, you know, I definitely would share this with Calvin to see what he can give as answers, I mean, he's dealt with this forever, so.
Yeah.
Have they effectively tied our hands?
It's, uh, it's a, it's a squabble between Calvin and Spectrum that has to be addressed that way. Alright. The business, do you have a motion change the April meeting to April first?
So long.
The second?
I can't do April first.
Okay, the first and the second, that's the, that's the organizational meeting that we have every April first, first Monday.
Second.
Okay. Nope.
I have a work commitment on the first Monday of every month.
Alright.
Plus it's April fourth, I'm not April fourth.
Guess who has all the bad committee assignments?
Uh, yeah, that's wrong.
Alright, okay, you got a motion, you got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, second, we need to set a public hearing for the budget. That will be seven o'clock on April first. Public hearing.
I might be able to make it back by something.
And then we can, you know, you can move on with your organizational meeting as, as we always have, okay? So, have a motion to have a public meeting on seven o'clock on April first. The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, I guess the next thing is I need, uh, we need a resolution to pass the tentative budget.
So long.
As a result of our budget workshop earlier? Have a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion there, any changes you would like to see?
Yeah, so I, I re-went over it and I noted that the mayor's salary did not change, but all others did. We have to be consistent across the board, it can't be pick and choose, so either we as a board have an increase or we as a board don't, in my opinion.
I agree with you.
What's your choice?
Well, that was at my request, so I understand what you're saying.
I get it, but I think that you should have the increase through and it's just part of business, or we as a board know increases through. I'm good either way, but it's gotta be consistent.
It's really not that much money, it's only a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, so it doesn't make any difference to put that through, is what I'm saying, but.
But still.
Yes.
For the amount of hours that are put in here for the mayor.
To stay consistent.
Right.
Stay consistent. Alright, you wanna change it?
Yes, I think we should change it to the.
Is that alright with the rest of the board?
Yes, that's all right, I agree with her.
Okay, we'll make that change, one needed, please.
Okay, appreciate the thought.
And we'll add that, um, still, we can approve the tentative budget. It's not gonna be that much difficult, or need that much. It'll be, ta-da.
Yeah, that too.
It's not gonna be that much money, and we can tack it on to the public hearing when we have it April first. Is that alright?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, we have a motion, do we have a second to approve the tentative budget?
We did.
Alright, is there any other discussion here? Roll call, please.
Justice Chomley.
Aye.
Justice McFetrich.
Aye.
Justice Chomley.
Aye.
Mayor, uh, Justice Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Next word of business is, uh, the board has to look at and, uh, consider approving the, or extending the probationary period for Mike King for another thirty days, so that we can get a license. This will move from March tenth, which was yesterday, to April tenth, another thirty days, uh, the union has, uh, has agreed to go along with this. In fact, the union left it after Woody, Woody said, yes, we go along with it, so. I need a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to, uh, to extend it to thirty days.
Are you the second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion here?
Do we need anything in writing?
I can have Woody write it outside.
Other than verbal, I would, I would feel more comfortable at this stage of our negotiating, anything that we do is have it in writing.
Okay, I'll have Woody write something tomorrow. Okay?
So if he puts it in writing, can we change the amendment that if it comes in writing to vote, or votes done?
Yes. If it comes in writing, you wanna, well.
Or, no, I mean, you all may vote it regardless, but.
Yeah.
My vote would change if it's not in writing.
Well, it'll be in writing.
Okay.
It will.
It's in writing, I'll vote for it.
It will be in writing.
Okay.
Okay, so all in favor of the extension?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, as long as it's in writing, I'll put that in there in a minute, please. Uh, we have a request, and, um, I think we talked a little bit about this at the budget meeting, uh, with an employee who, uh, is, is looking at the possibility, depending upon the board's decision, the possibility of coming back to work after his injury on a, uh, on a part-time basis. Start the first week or two, you know, because eight hours is a long time behind your feet when you haven't had to be at the job site for three or four months. Uh, I think we left it at, we would see how the doctors felt about this. And whether, uh, whether Jimmy felt that he was, uh, felt that he was strong enough to put in. I support this, beginning at least the first couple weeks to see how he's going to do. If he wants to work four hours a day, if he gets stronger, if he finds out that he's having difficulty, then we'll stop, but I think he's ready to come back to work, he just has, I think he just has some, he wants to start out slow. He doesn't wanna end up having this, uh, having this issue go on much more than it has gone on so far now. I know we don't have any light duty sanctions, he will be back in a full-time, in a four-hour full-work position, uh, on his feet, doing whatever he needs to do. And he does wanna get back here, I mean, he's, he's, but if, if the board would go along with it, give him a week or two at four hours a day, let it build up. After the, after the trial period, if he wants to start at eight hours a day, let him do it. But I'm asking that you allow him to come back to work for the four hours a day, the first week or so, after the doctor releases him.
It's gonna be, my question is.
On the twenty-seventh, he should be released to go back to work.
Is he being released on a?
He's gonna have no restrictions?
Part-time basis?
Well, I think the doctor's gonna release him on a full-time basis.
He could get released right now if he felt up to it. He's healed completely, but when you've been at home that long, you're, I mean, everything shrinks, your muscles, you're, you know, not on your feet all day long, so the doctor's ready to release him, if he feels he's ready, the doctor's ready to release him, he's completely healed. I, I talked to him today, he said he's going the twenty-seventh, and he, he showed the doctors to release him, that he would, this is the twenty-eighth, he can fill out his papers the twenty-seventh, and.
He doesn't.
But he wants to make sure that he can work a full day at first.
I know, I'm trying to kind of, how to address that.
So I did look into it, and if we bring someone back part-time, and he feels that he can't go to full-time, we are obligated to continue to maintain him at part-time, folks. So I did look into it and if we bring someone back part-time and he feels that he can't go to full-time, we are obligated to continue to maintain him at part-time, folks. So, it's opening a Pandora box, I, I hate being a negative Nelly because I totally get coming back from an injury. I've been there, done that. But it, it, it's, it's a situation, so whether the union will allow us to put something in writing, that this is clearly from this date to this date, allowed the four hours, if at that point his supervisor and or the board and or the employee feel he cannot do that, he would be returned to
Disability.
Medical disability, but I don't think legally we can do that frankly. Is then put someone back out again, cause it starts their time over again and now it's out on disability. He, it, it would start his disability all over from the get-go. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's like, it's sorry, you need to be so negative.
No, I think there's another option.
I'm thinking the same thing, how we, how do we do that?
I think there's another option, you can bring him back as a full-time, full-time person. And if he can only, if, if he can only work four hours a day, then he will clock out at noon. But he will still be regarded as a full-time employee. If he wants to work two days a week, eight hours a day, or three days a week, eight hours a day. And if he feels that he needs to rest his feet or whatever he needs to do. You know, if he clocks out at noon, he clocks out at two o'clock, uh, whatever, if he's using his time, his sick time. But he will still be listed as a full-time employee. Not as a four-hour employee, not as a part-time employee.
Well, it's probably starting to go, so he's, he even needs to come back full-time, so he.
Well, I think.
You're asking us to give him shorter days if needed.
In effect, yeah, but he will be back full-time, with the understanding that if he can't manage the six hours or eight hours or whatever, he signs out, tells Mike that he's, you know, he can't do it. That time is, is, uh, is taken off his sick time and all of, you know what I mean? But he's still listed as a full-time employee. If he wants to work eight hours, he's free to work eight hours. If he feels that he can only work four at that day or on that day, I mean, every day's different here. Every day is not down in the water hole, you know, fixing a pipe, every day is, uh, you know, a bit different. But in a way it's self-limiting, but on the other hand, he's still listed as a full-time employee. And, uh, he makes the decision.
I'm almost, I shouldn't say almost, I am surprised that given the nature of his job that the doctor didn't, um, have him come back.
First to see.
You know, and have it writ, I would feel much more comfortable that way. Having him come back four hours a day for a week or two. And then it's on the doctor to say, how are you feeling? Are you able to do this for eight hours a day?
It does help us out.
Or taper it up, right.
It does help us out.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I mean, we don't wanna lose him.
No.
We don't wanna lose him and we don't want him to reinjure himself. I feel that i- if the doctor were to do it that way, that it would take any onus off of us. It's allowing him to get back to work, but not kill himself in the process, feeling like I gotta be here eight hours or no.
Right, cause if it doesn't work, the doctor takes him back out, seeing outage just before, not a new claim starting over.
It's a better idea.
I just.
We can do that, we'll have the doctor.
I just feel it's, and I feel it's better for Jimmy as well in, in rather than just throwing him into the fire and feeling like, uh, you know, I gotta be there, I, my legs are killing me, but I gotta be there and I, I just, I don't want an employee.
Right, and he's prone to injury.
I don't want an employee to get hurt again.
Takes care of the either or situation.
Yeah.
It's good idea.
I think it's, I think it's better for him.
We can do that, we can have the doctors do that on the, on the benefits of release. Sure, good idea.
Yeah, get us out of that.
Thank you. And I'm sure he thinks.
I don't wanna see him, he injure himself.
I can confirm it, but, yeah.
Long, long as they do that, I don't know, maybe they, maybe they will do partial days. I don't know if they either release or don't release.
Yeah.
No, no, they, they, they will do partial.
Conditional release.
They, they will do.
Well, I would, I would think they would, they, quite often they will, they will release you back to work with restrictions.
Yes.
But here's no restrictions.
I know, but.
They can't have restrictions.
But it's, to me, it's a similar thing. They're just restricting his hours for a couple of weeks.
Right, you're coming, you're coming back at
To Bell Buckets.
Four hours a day, if he feels he could do four hours a day, five days a week and do that, say, for two weeks. And then that is a decision between, you know, Jimmy and his doctor. I'm, I mean, it's not up to us to say, yeah, you're good to go eight hours a day, because we really don't know. And I really don't wanna see him get hurt, I don't wanna see him go back out and I don't wanna lose a good employee.
Yes.
I agree.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
We'll have that worked out.
That makes me feel better.
Yeah, makes everybody feel better, thank you.
That's good.
Alright, let's see, thank President Lucine, excuse me. It's unfortunate, but I can see the, uh, I can see the thinking. I have a letter of resignation here from the chairman of the zoning board of appeals. It's, I guess, do we need to read this end of the record or can we just?
I think you need to read it.
Okay, he probably doesn't want me to read it anymore, cause it's a little camera here anyway, but anyway, so. I think, uh, I think Clark has done a wonderful job. He's been, uh, very conscientious on the zoning board. Uh, I will make sure that we write him a letter of appreciation for his services. He mentions a couple particularly interesting cases, uh, with some trailers and some double lines and some
Chicken.
And some, uh, and some, uh, other, some feathered friends. Uh, but anyway, um. I, I would just like a, a resolution accepting this resignation. And sending Clark a, a thanks, you know, a thank you note, a thank you letter on behalf of the village for his, uh, for his efforts as chairman of the zoning board.
So, look.
Have a second?
Second, with regrets.
Yes, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, we'll get the letter written and out to him soon. Okay, this is my, uh, head of board project on there. So, ladies and gentlemen, if there's no further business to come before this board, have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all, thank you all.
Thank you.
You've been wonderful to work with.